Council meeting to order this evening. We appreciate your attendance here. We'd like to welcome citizens who are here and students if they're here. We're grateful for all the young people in attendance and we are very grateful for that. So, but first of all, start out with a invocation by Councilmember Millsap with a pledge by Councilmember Jensen.
Our Father in Heaven, we come before you to express gratitude that we live in this fantastic place with so many fantastic people. We pray that we can have your guidance and your spirit with us. We pray that together we can make the best decisions for our city. And this is what we pray, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. If we could stand and repeat the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks.
If you would like to speak to the council, we just give each of the meetings an opportunity for anyone who'd like to speak to the council. We have some papers that we just ask you to fill out. They're out in the foyer and if you give them to Kim so that we can at least record them in the minutes, that would be wonderful. So, we first start with the Mayor's Youth Awards. So, oh, thank you, Kim. Sorry. Hold on just one second. I skipped up. I messed up again.
I'll make the motion to approve the meeting's agenda as written.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Great. See that? I can't go too far astray. Okay, it's your turn. Thanks.
They keep you on track here.
That's right.
All right. Mayor Packard and council, thank you for having us tonight to recognize some of our outstanding youth in Springville. My name is Jessica Maxwell and I work at the library as the Community Health and Wellness Resource Coordinator. Tonight we have two young women to recognize, Guadalupe and Maritza Gallegos. So, we invite them to come up. Guadalupe and Maritza are sisters, so we get to recognize them together, which is really awesome. So, come over here. So, Guadalupe and Maritza were nominated for recognition by our teen librarian, Thomasina Taylor. Both girls attend Merritt Preparatory Academy, where Guadalupe is in 11th grade and Maritza is in 9th grade. They are both on the cheerleading team this year where they contribute to their school spirit and culture through service and teamwork. Both girls are some of the librarians' favorite, most consistent, and hardest-working volunteers at the library. They regularly attend our monthly teen volunteer group to help with program preparation, as well as helping at our large events and children's programs. They show great work ethic and integrity when completing tasks and helping to run different aspects of our various programs. Guadalupe and Maritza are also bright examples of kindness and inclusion. We recently had a new foreign exchange student join our Volantines group and she was pretty nervous when she first came in. She was in a completely new place and a new situation and both of our wonderful girls here welcomed her immediately. They introduced themselves and included her in the activities and conversations. Guadalupe and Maritza show initiative and care for others by filling a need when they see it. They recently shared their language talents with library patrons by guiding a Spanish-speaking tour. Our librarians were amazed when they translated the script and brought extra resources in Spanish without even being asked. We recognize Guadalupe and Maritza as exemplary volunteers, beacons of kindness and hope, and outstanding members of our community.
Wow. Congratulations.
Oh, yes. We have a small gift for you.
Yep.
And then we'll have Mayor Packard come down and take a photo. So, each of you can get a little gift from the mayor and council. Yes.
Do we get to hear a speech from them?
Oh, I wish. All right. And then, yeah, we'll just.
I'd like to thank the Springville Library for letting us show our, or giving us an opportunity to do service.
Yeah, yeah. We didn't tell them they had to speak, so that's good.
But we're very thankful for letting them, letting them help us, let us help in our community. Awesome. Thank you.
Pretty good.
Stuff.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so very much. We're so very proud. And we just invite you to be part of the youth city council. There's an opportunity in our community. We just invite you to do that. We'd love to have your participation. And we love great people there and you would certainly fit in very well. And, young man, you've just got a couple of years, but you're welcome to do it, but in a future time. So, you're very, you should be a very proud mother. So, thank you very much for sharing that with us. So, is there anyone here for school or for a lot of scouts or whatever? Okay. Very good. Very good. You're welcome to come up and be on the rostrum with us if you want to. We have candy. We have a chair up here. You don't have to, but we've had a lot of them come up here and it just, it's a little different perspective when you're sitting here as opposed to, oh, he's going to come. His dad's talking him into it. I knew it.
Anything good in that drawer?
I've got some milk or some candy bars.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
If it's in that drawer, you can have it.
Yeah. Is there candy in there? Oh, yeah. Very good. Okay, we'd like to-
What class is it? What class?
Utah History.
Oh, very good. Okay, we'll move to the portion where the public has a chance to say a few words. Wendy, you're here from Tabitha Way, so we'd just like to turn some time over to you and go through what you'd like to, so.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Wendy Osborne from Tabitha's Way Local Food Pantries. Just wanted to do a couple of things. Wanted to, first off, provide a report from last year. Tabitha's Way, our food pantry provided food to 2,691 households from Springville, which equaled 9,317 citizens from Springville City that we served in our food pantry. Also wanted to quickly just say thank you to each of you for your service and leadership to this community. And I would like to also say thank you publicly to Springville City for the support of the citizens. Our food pantry exists because our community rallies together and helps us provide food for these families in need. And so, we're very blessed and honored to do this work. And just wanted to recognize that it takes the community effort and we're so grateful for the support that we receive at Tabitha's Way. I also wanted to just share about two different upcoming events. On March 15th will be the statewide food drive, Feed Utah. Tabitha's Way will be participating in that food drive. We will have three drop-off locations, Spanish Fork Macy's, Springville Macy's, and Spanish Fork Pantry and Tabitha's Way Pantry in Spanish Fork. And so, families can, from Springville, if they'd like to drop off food donations. Those food donations will go directly to helping families in our community. So, if you'd like to participate in that, we would love to see that happening. Each year, we get a wonderful bump in food donations during the holiday season, which helps us get through kind of some of the spring months. But then, during the summer months, our food pantries often see a lot more food pantries coming into our food, into our pantries. And so, a lot of need. And that's because families rely on other free and reduced lunches during the school year. And so, when their kids are home, they need more, more food in their houses. And so, summer months are really tough for food pantries because we don't get a lot of food drives. And so, the spring Feed Utah food drive is really important to us because it helps us stock up our warehouse and feed these families. And so, that would be wonderful for anybody wanting to participate in that. If you have any questions, you can reach out to us, give us a call, or, again, just drop off at one of those locations. It'll be March 15th from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. you can drop off food donations. And then, lastly, I would like to-
Hold on just one second. Is it possible we could put that in on the website? Oh, okay.
Wonderful. Yep, that would be great. And then, secondly, I wanted to extend an invitation to all of you here to attend our ribbon cutting. So, Spanish Fork of Tabitha's Way recently moved across the street to a larger facility. And that facility now will, is almost double in size from what we had before. And we needed to move because we were serving approximately 100 households every three hours. And so, we just didn't have enough room in our, in our existing building to serve these families. And so, we've been blessed to move into a new location across the street. But we would love for you to come and join us and celebrate this new building that we have to serve our community. So, I put, I snuck little cards in front of you on your desks with a little QR code. And if you would, just scan that and fill that out and let us know that you're coming. But we would love for you to attend this ribbon cutting. And again, I just want to end with a thank you. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your support. And thank you to Springville City for, to all of its citizens for the help that allows us to do this great work in our community. So.
Well, you're very kind, Wendy. We appreciate it an awful lot. This is the old Smiths or Safeway, isn't it, in Spanish?
Yeah, I think, well, I've heard-
Way back.
Ray's?
It was way back Safeway. It was Joanne's.
Oh, okay.
You were in Joanne's before that, right? So, you're Jason.
So, um, yeah.
Or no, was it Fritz's?
It was Fritz's.
Fritz's. And it wasn't that long that you moved to Fritz's?
Yeah.
It's been since we've been in council.
It's been half, almost seven years now. So, yeah.
That's great. I mean, and it was beautiful, the way you did that. I can only imagine how nice it is.
Yeah, we're so excited about this new building. Yeah. And what is a food pantry but a grocery store?
I know. So, now you're in, this was Dale Bread, too, for a while.
So, yeah.
Postus.
Postus with the mostus. Yeah.
There we go.
It's great. It's a good location. I think it'll work.
I'll be out of town, but I just encourage anybody to go over. So, if you'll excuse me. But anyway, thank you very much.
You're welcome anytime.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Tammy Flake.
I'm Tammy Flake. If I haven't gotten to meet you guys yet, I hope you will see my face a lot more. I've been to a few of your meetings, including the budget one, which I know is super dry and boring. But I stick to a budget in my house and I really think that our city, our state, you know, our country is built off of it. And so, I'm not here to try to find mistakes or anything like that. I just, the mayor came to a park meeting a few months ago and he encouraged us all to get involved. Our city will only get better if we could see this whole room filled, every city council, not because we're here fighting about issues, but just knowing about what's going on. And so, that's really sparked something in me about just getting involved with the city. So, I want to say thank you, like Wendy, for all of your guys' service. There's so much that goes into running a city. I would not want to be in your place, but I do want you to know, I'm here to help and support and I, I'm just an observer. And so, I just wanted to say that today because I felt bad that I did ask a question in that meeting because I know that's not my place. But the budget is really important to me. And so, when you're having those meetings, if you can remember, you know, these are our tax dollars that are paying for consultants. Not saying that what she did specifically with water is not beneficial, but it's, you know, make sure we're putting the cost to what's effective, especially because like we've got bills with fluoride coming out of water. That doesn't affect us here in Springville because we don't have it. But, you know, making things are good and then going to the future. So, if we can just remember, okay, what was the cost of this? How could we do better next time? You know, things like that. So, again, thanks, you guys. I appreciate it. Oh, and I'm also the Spanish Fork Veterans of Foreign Wars commander. So, if you guys need help with anything along those lines with the veterans, please reach out. We would love to get more involved with Tabitha's Way. And so, the more I'm here, the more I can hear about things we can do. We could be at Smiths. We're always there with the poppies for veterans and Memorial Day. But we, as veterans, want to get more involved in our cities. So, please reach out if you need anything from me. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you, Tammy. Appreciate your enthusiasm. And that's one of the mysteries that I think is missing. And that is, is that the budget, so many people come to the final budget approval and there's this long process that just goes on. It starts in January and February and it works its way through. So, we appreciate you coming early because that's kind of when the cement's being poured and, and those are great times to be able to interject ideas and thoughts. And we wish that more citizens would come, but thank you. Okay, we'll enter the portion of our consent agenda. Any questions in relationship to the consent agenda? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I motion that we approve the consent agenda as written.
You have a second?
I will second that.
Is that a roll call vote? No. It has the names down here. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Okay, Bruce, appreciate you wearing a tie for your presentation. That means a lot. Thank you.
It's a boring tie, but I wore it nonetheless. We are talking about the budget, so.
Yeah, for a banker, it's a very powerful tie.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, we, you have in your packets a staff report outlining some items that need to be amended in the current fiscal year's budget. So, I'll just run through those. And if you've got questions, either I can address them or if I can't answer your questions, I think we've got directors here that can address these specific items. I'll just kind of start from the top and work my way down. First one has to do with the police department and the general fund with the amendment appropriating an additional $26,117 to the general grants line item in the police department. This is actually a state grant that came a year and a half ago. And we spent some of the money in the first year and then appropriated another portion of it in the current budget year with the expectation of spending the balance of it in the next budget year. But it looks like we're ahead of pace to spend the money. And so, this will just appropriate the remaining balance of the existing grant dollars that have been received from the state as part of a state public safety mental health program grant. And that'll allow the police department to spend the rest of those funds in the current budget year. The next item's in the art museum. In the current budget, there's already $25,000 budgeted for a facility study and some planning efforts there for the block around the art museum. The art museum has put an RFP out and retained the services of a consultant to do that work. And it's looking like it's probably going to cost more than the $25,000 that was originally budgeted. The Art Association has agreed to participate in an amount up to an additional $75,000. So, this amendment would appropriate that contribution. If it doesn't, if it comes in less than that, the association will contribute less and will only spend the actual amount, but would give up to $100,000 of authority to the art museum to finish that study within the scope that they've outlined in the RFP. The next, one, two, three, four, five items are all related to the power department on two different issues. The first one has to do with some rental charges associated with the generator that was put in place as backup power for the water reclamation facility while the Whitehead Power Plant Generator project was underway. Historically, the power plant itself has provided that backup power. While it was under construction, we needed to have a different generator available in the event of an outage at the wastewater treatment plant. And those costs were actually covered by the power department as they were the ones taking the power offline. They found some savings in other projects, the three listed there, the fuel tank replacement, the ironworker machine, and the air handlers there at the power plant. That'll cover the $68,000 cost there. Through that project, there's been some reconfiguration of how that's going to work. And actually, going forward, the wastewater treatment plant will have a standalone generator there as backup power and won't rely on the power plant as that backup power. There's a number of technical reasons, along with sort of some operational changes and not having staff on-site 24/7 that'll make that the most economical solution going forward. The other power department project that needs to be addressed is the 1500 West Center Street Substation, which has been a multi-year, multimillion-dollar project. I think, was it last week or the week before? I think Director Miller gave you an update on that project. So, I think you saw some pictures if you haven't driven out there. We do need to appropriate, in order to close that project out, an additional $800,000. That all comes from impact, this is an impact fee project. So, those are impact fee dollars that are covering that.
Hey, I think you skipped the rec center corner.
The Par CIP.
Oh, I'm sorry. I went right past that. That's the most exciting one on the whole list. And I skipped right over.
Exactly.
I have a tendency to-
You said it was going to be a dull discussion. I figured that's why you skipped it.
That's what I gravitate towards naturally. So, I'll go back. I'm sorry. There has been, there is in the current budget, $250,000 budgeted for some improvements on the, I guess it would be southeast corner of the CRC property where the pickleball courts are, to add a fitness park there at that corner. The recreation staff has been busy soliciting design proposals from various companies and consultants. And it looks, and the PAR board's been involved in that whole process. And the PAR board's recommended that we appropriate an additional $300,000 from PAR revenues to build the preferred design that was, that was proposed through that process. That'll bring that total project to 550,000. Again, that's PAR dollars that would be appropriated to cover those costs. I didn't make that very exciting, but that's the issue.
What else in that, Stacy? What is in that facility? Because it's, it's not an enclosed structure, is it? It's just an outdoor park, if I remember right, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that the Ninja Park?
It's, it's, yeah, I, I just, just so that we know.
This is the way to get the meeting started.
It's cool. Yeah.
She's a little prettier than you.
This is very exciting. So, the park, it will, it's a fitness park, so it'll have a 40-yard dash, which is really fun. You can race each other and it'll have a clock that times you. We, there's a park down in St. George. I don't know if you're familiar with it. It's in Washington. It's some, it would have, this would be kind of similar to that, only better because it's newer and we're going to make it even more incredible. But it'll also have a park. It's like a ninja course. So, all ages would be able to use it, you know, on different levels, they'll be able to use that. And also, there'll be an area where we can use, the CRC could have fitness classes out there. We'll design it so they can come out and utilize that space for fitness. And so, it'll just, there'll be a walk around it. It'll be just a nice, it's a nice little area. We've just got less than an acre right there. It's kind of small, but we're going to pack in a lot of different activities and for the, for the community right there. And it just kind of fits in with the whole CRC theme.
Are there bathrooms there?
Not yet, but we're working on that. That's another phase, but we're working on that because we really do need to have restrooms and a drinking fountain there.
It's free, right?
Yes, it is free. It's a park. It's open, you know, for anybody to come utilize that, as well as the pickleball courts that are there. So, once it's all finished, it's just, I don't know if you remember, it's just been big, huge piles of dirt over there. And we've actually recently removed that dirt and leveled it off and it's looking a lot better. But it was weeds and dirt. We've just take, we're going to take that patch and make something really fun, a little bit different than, than your usual park. But it should be a great asset for us.
And Stacy, the commitment was there to do the park. This $300,000 was just there to finish it up, I think, if I remember right.
Yes, yes, the PAR board.
So, so the commitment was there and the PAR board, the PAR board approved this amount to make sure that it got finished.
So, we can finish it all off and it'll be completely done. We're hoping to have it finished by the end of June.
Wow.
Any other questions?
Very good. Thanks, Stacy, for the, do you want to finish Bruce's presentation?
You might have questions and she's over golf.
There's some golf, man.
Yeah, I'm going to have golf questions.
Yeah.
The last item's all kind of related. Just to give you a little bit of background, for many years, the golf course is operated such that the golf professional has effectively owned the pro shop there. We leased the space, but the business itself is run by the golf pro. And they've done some analysis there and decided that we want to reverse that. I won't say most, but many other municipal golf courses, the city owns the shop and it's just run by the staff there. And that's the model that the rec department is, or the golf course is proposing to move to. So, this, this series of adjustments will effectuate that change in the business model. There's some changes to the revenue projections. It'll cover some of these startup costs and make some of the adjustments to the salary. Part of the changing that around is renegotiating the employment contract with the golf pro and then purchasing some existing inventory, along with new inventory for the coming year and some fixtures that were owned by the golf pro there. So, it didn't really add up with all those. Come to about $195,000 is the total there.
Are there going to be any issues there with the golf pro?
Yeah.
Okay. That's great.
Sorry, you snuck in there.
I mean, does the pro shop make money or is it, does it lose money annually?
It actually makes money. We've looked into this pretty in-depth. We've looked at the last five years or so and it's been anywhere between 60,000 to 80,000 on net profit.
Yeah, I think you'll see in the fiscal '26 budget, this change is anticipated and they've got the additional revenue budget in there as well. So, appears that the golf pro, I think, is interested in this change in structure and it appears to be beneficial to the city. So, that's the proposal. And that's the extent of the presentation. Unless you've got other questions.
Very good. Other questions for Bruce?
I have a public hearing.
All right. We need to have a public hearing. So, we'll open it up for a public, anybody in the public who'd like to speak to the budget changes.
Seeing there's no public comment, I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Okay, I'll entertain a motion then for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2025-05, opening and amending the general fund, special revenue fund, power fund, and golf course fund budgets for operating and capital expenses, applying to the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025, as outlined in Exhibit A.
I will second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to roll call vote. Jake?
Yes.
Logan?
Yes.
Mindy?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Bruce, you're off the hook. So, is it John instead of Carla?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. This is a boundary line adjustment with Bobo City. I think we've heard about this, haven't we?
We have. Mayor, council, Mr. Bott, Sandra Bott. I just, mayor looked at me like, what are you saying? Anyway, he's my boy's age. He's a good basketball player.
Oh, there you go.
But, yeah, we looked at this back in August of, when we say we, the council did, back in August of 2022. What Provo's done here is they put in a road. It's completely finished now. And the idea is, this blue line is Springville's boundary line. And the idea is to move it to the back of curb along the road. And so, Springville would be receiving property. This is something the council agreed to back in 2022. The problem is, is when you do a boundary line adjustment with two different cities, even though it was Provo's idea to do this boundary line adjustment, they somehow didn't follow through with their side. And so, now they are going forward and making sure it happens on their side. So, we've got to bring it back because it's been two years. And so, before you use a resolution to say, hey, we're interested in doing the boundary line adjustment, then we have to wait 60 days and then we come back 60 days and you do an ordinance saying, yeah, we will do the boundary line adjustment. I, Mindy, or?
Oh, sorry. We'll own the road? Oh, sorry. Is that?
No, no. We, so this line will be extended to-
That's Provo on this side.
Yeah, so this is Provo. This is Springville. This line will be extended to the back of curb coming down.
So, we're gaining property?
Yeah, we're gaining property. We'll own to the road. What that does is- What that does is it doesn't leave a little sliver on the east side of the road, but it will add to the properties here. And I don't think these property owners are really upset about gaining property. But the city's boundaries will extend there.
So, you just said these property owners won't be upset about gaining property. Are we going to allow them to use the city property?
Well, it won't be city property. We're just talking boundary line adjustment.
Okay, so it will, it's their property already?
It'll be their property, yes. All will happen is these boundary lines will jet out to the back of curb and come down to where it is fourteen hundred north.
Okay.
Who takes care of that road? Provo owns the road, don't they? Yeah, when you think about it. Yeah, they own the road, so.
So-
Yeah, cool.
Uh, there won't, yeah, we're not going into the road at all.
Heck, maybe, maybe it'll be easier to get to Joe Vandyto's. We don't know.
Yeah.
Well, that does bring up an interesting point. Will there be access off that road to the backside of these properties?
That is something that the property owners would have to work out with Provo, since it's a Provo road.
That is a specific purpose of the boundary line adjustment is to ensure there's not a nuisance trip there. So, Mayor Child and I met with Mayor Cuffusi and her staff on this originally, and that's the purpose of it. And the stated interest of Springville is to reroute that road so we can make the intersection on State Street safer.
Okay.
Yeah, because at one point back, that is like three, four years ago, the thought was is you could get to Joe's by coming down and then coming up fourteen forty or a road that would come up the middle of the block there.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll see.
Okay, thank you. Other questions for John?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I motion to approve Resolution Number twenty-two-five dash zero-six, adjusting the common boundary line immediately north of fourteen hundred north and approximately eight hundred and twenty feet west of Main Street in Springville between Springville City and Provo City.
I'll second.
Okay, it's a roll call vote. Craig?
Yes.
Logan?
Yes.
Mindy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jake?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay, John, it's you again for operating city retail sales.
Uh, yes, Mayor, City Council. This item comes before you, basically for what you just heard, what's going on with the golf course. In the process of moving everything from the pro, Mr. Norman, to the city, we started looking at, how do we run retail stores? And we actually have a couple of different retail stores in the city. We have the one at the museum. We have a little bit of a retail store down at the CRC. We also have a little store now that's popped up in the library. It did pretty well. It's first week, made about six hundred bucks the very first week.
Very good.
Yeah. And then, we also sell some compost, as Brad Stieple pointed out. And so, there we go. So, we have a bunch of different cells that's going on throughout the city. As we started looking at this, the way that we set up our budget right now is for fees. We put every fee in the budget ordinance and that's approved by the council. This technically isn't a fee. It's actually, we're setting prices, but we don't have anything that really governs how we set the price. Also, too, what we've tried to do with this resolution is to make it flexible so that directors and those running the store can make sure that they're getting the best value for the city through the store. And so, this is what we set up. And so, the resolution before you gives authority to the directors to basically operate the retail sales in the store. And we do have places, again, where we don't necessarily have stores, but we have retail sales. So, you can kind of see what the ordinance does there authority-wise. And then, also too, it sets up guidelines that requires the directors to come up with policies for their store. Those policies would address these things listed here, which are revenue goals, purchase strategy, inventory management, markups and discounts, trainings. Now, on the markups and discounts, they're allowed to do different types of discounts, from everything to, if it's an employee discount to, if you have so much that somebody's buying, they might discount that a little bit. If it's been in the store for so long, they'll discount it. If it's a holiday or something like that, they might do some kind of discount. Now, they can't go below the wholesale price unless it's been in the store for at least one year. And that, you're just trying to get rid of the inventory type thing, so. So, any questions on that? And then, just moving on to the last thing is there has to be an annual report to the city controller. They have to give a report of the past year, revenue goals, budget expense, and what the audits show. And then, also, the future plans and strategies to overcome anything that's kind of been a struggle in the past.
Do we want to do something more than annual reports? Just so we can see if it's, I don't know, sinking quickly and it's not going to make any money towards the end of the fiscal year?
We, we could. One of the ways that it's set up now, though, is the director has their eyes on their, the revenues at least every quarter, if not on a monthly basis, because they're worried about where their revenues are because it affects the whole system. So, we could do that way.
Oh, sorry. I'm, I'm assuming they have to follow the money management next to them, which means they have to deposit those within forty-eight hours. Then they'll be on the accounting system and the supervisors can see it within, basically within a business day. They can track all those revenues.
Oh, yes. So, the way that it works is every month, we get a report, all directors do, and it shows every revenue for the prior month. And so, now there'll be a line item revenue. There currently is one for this, the museum store. Now, there'll be one in the rec department for the golf. So, that will show, hey, are we meeting our targets when it comes to revenue? So, yes, a good question. Sorry, I wasn't very clear. Yes. Yeah, our city controller sends that out to every director every month. That shows the revenues and their expenses.
Other questions for John? Okay. You okay, Craig? Excellent. Thumbs up. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-five dash zero-seven, which authorizes directors to operate retail sales functions within their facilities and provides guidelines to follow for purchasing products and setting prices.
I'll second.
Okay, have a roll call vote. Maybe? Mike?
Yes.
Jake?
Yes.
Logan?
Yes.
Mindy?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Okay, very good. I don't think we have any reason for a closed session.